Got it. Commissioner Lukey here.
I also have a question for staff.
That's right, Shannon.
So, just really quickly, in your staff report, you indicated that the usage itself was allowed by some really obscure zoning along a 3,000-foot stretch. Can you review that? Because it sounded to me as if you were saying that it's allowed by right. And I just wanted to get clarification on whether or not that was allowed or not allowed, or wrestling far beyond the pale, or what.
This is specific to the fast food restaurant, not the automobile convenience facility. So specifically to White Castle.
Okay.
Our zoning ordinance authorizes a fast food restaurant C2 under one of two conditions. The first one is a minimum of a two-story building, which this is not, so throw that one away. The second condition is that we need to have at least 660 feet of contiguous zoning along the same side of the street. And it lists the classifications that applies. I'm trying to find exactly where it says this in the staff report. I'm pretty sure we included it in the site plan review. So I'm sorry, I don't have the page readily available. But it authorizes them to apply for the conditional use permit. Without that contiguous zoning, they would either have to argue nonconforming rights, which they would not be able to retain because of the demolition of the structure and relocation. So it would just be prohibited, essentially.
Okay. And then I just have two other questions. One is really quick. Just in regard to the White Castle monument sign, is that eight-foot height allowed by right as well? Or is that... Wow, that is huge.
It is, yes. So we allow, we authorize monument signs eight feet maximum in height.
Wow, okay. That seems really large, okay. And then my only other question was just in regard to the FAR ratio and the consistency with the comp plan. I'm wondering if you can touch on that a little bit about, given this density of automobile-oriented uses and the concerns regarding what the future of the neighborhood could be, I'm just wondering whether our obligation to uphold the comp plan, whether or not we have any standing even to address that or not.
I would be happy to answer that.
Thank you.
So you'll see, well, first of all, at community of the whole, we wanted to make sure that we identified this immediately. We are in an activity center. Central Avenue is a commercial corridor. East Hennepin is a community corridor. And we have existing policies that would, that ask us to support more pedestrian-friendly uses. I would probably add that the pedestrian-oriented overlay district is across the street. However, it does not apply to this property. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we do not have any variances present. Therefore, as one would allude to, there are no minimum floor ratio requirements here. There is not like a minimum building footprints. So instead, we just look to the conditional use permit and we evaluate the comp plan findings. And I'd say they were probably pretty similar for both. So if you don't mind, I'll just kind of highlight what we did for an analysis. So the, or I'm sorry, for the comp plan, those are the policies that we identified most relevant to the proposed projects. We listed on page four and five of the Holiday staff report. And again, very similarly in White Castle. And so we recognize that these policies don't generally support these automobile-oriented uses, such as the automobile convenience facility and fast food restaurant. However, we do recognize some of the existing conditions and the fact that they are already present on the site in a very ineffective, overparked situation where we're not meeting many of our existing requirements. So, for example, Holiday is built over a property line with some serious traffic issues on the property. I don't know if anyone's ever utilized the site, either as bicyclist, pedestrian, or as a vehicle, all three of which, it's very difficult to maneuver in and out. And there's certainly lots of opportunities to have conflict between vehicles, bikes, peds, and met transit, as was mentioned by one of the speakers earlier. So for Holiday, that's an issue. It's substandard in area and it shows because we have minimum lottery requirements for an automobile convenience facility 12,000 square feet. We're well under that right now. And so, as I mentioned, it does not meet any of those requirements. As far as being pedestrian-friendly, which is something that we would want in an activity center, community corridor, commercial corridor, we're definitely making enhancements, or I should say, the applicant is making many enhancements to move us in the right direction. Holiday doesn't require any alternative compliance. What does that mean? It's meeting the landscaping requirements. It's meeting all of the canopy trees, the quantity of shrubs, the perimeter fencing in an open and decorative manner. Significant reduction in curb cuts to build in the expectation of where vehicles are going to be. Unlike the present situation where there are so many curb cuts, vehicles come from many different directions. There's the parking lot that is owned by White Castle, is accessed from Central Avenue, but also exits off of Seventh Street, and then also East Hennepin. So there are multiple areas where conflict between peds, bikes, and vehicles already exist. The sidewalks standards are not currently being met either, and that's going to be redone with the proposed development. So that kind of highlights some of the conflicts that we currently have with site plan review and our current comp plan and kind of the goals that we're going and trying to meet with proposed development. So then additionally, we're in, within the boundary area, the Central Avenue Small Area Plan. So there, it talks about redevelopment ideally being mixed use. Now, mixed use, as we have come to know as a commission and as staff have defined, it doesn't mean mixed use on the property. It means generally mixed use in the area. So we support a mix of uses to make sure that residents are able to take advantage of retail where they don't feel like they have to go to destination, automobile-centric other locations, Malva America, to satisfy their daily needs, or that they can actually walk to the grocery store or be able to bike to the grocery store, for example. And that we want to have residents and office users being able to utilize a mix of uses. So that's what I would say as far as a classification for mixed use, really what is intended, both in the Central Avenue plan and then just generally in comprehensive planning. Ideally, the development intensity here would have been TOD. And I don't think anybody argues that would be ideal. But the site is under control by City of Minneapolis to guide that kind of development, for example. But if that were proposed here, certainly it would be supported in that plan. I would probably also note that the Central Avenue plan talks about the importance of pet access. And I think both Public Works and CPED staff agree that we have made significant improvements through multiple meetings with the developers to get to a site plan that we see today. Of course, as Mr. Eilers mentioned from White Castle, that this illustrative site plan doesn't show the proposed seating area landscaping that we have adjacent to Sixth Street Southie. So it's even better than what you see here. And also, again, more ped-friendly. Finally, the subject properties are within the Marcy Homes Master Plan, where it says generally commercial, which, again, these uses would be supported in general commercial districts. Asking for, making sure that audio-oriented uses should not be exempt from providing pet access and amenities. And we believe that those are present. Buildings are up to the corner. We have entrances facing corners. We have the minimum fenestration provided on almost every facade except for one for the White Castle facing East Hennepin. And then front doors established to, maybe oriented towards parking lots, which the Holiday is, for example. However, they should be visible and accessible from the sidewalk. So both applicants have actually done the extra step to say not only are we going to provide pet access, where logically, if you're filling up with gas, it's the closest door to access the convenience store. But then also, they have, the Holiday has their corner cut on Seventh and Central Avenue. So that, it's that analysis that staff feels that although we have these existing policies that generally say these types of uses are not ideal, we certainly are meeting many, many more of our long-range planning goals as far as site improvements and pedestrian access. And staff identified those policies and those statements as being consistent with the proposed development.
Commissioner Rockwell.
Quick follow-up question on that. So the, what is the legal relevance of the application as compared to the existing site? Rather than the application as compared to the policies in the comp plan devoid of context?
Sure. If I, I'm going to try my best to see if I understand your question completely. The applications we're evaluating are conditional use permit for proposed land use. If we were instead arguing that the appropriate land use approvals were nonconforming use applications, change of nonconforming use or expansion of nonconforming use, the evaluation is different. So for a conditional use permit, you have the six findings that you find in the staff report for each land use relevant to Holiday and White Castle. For an expansion of nonconforming use, you're looking at intensity. You're looking at whether or not it's compatible with the neighborhood and for uses allowed in that zoning district. In this case, we already have zoning classifications that allow for these uses. They are conditional uses, not prohibited. So the difference between existing nonconforming and conditional, in this case, for the purposes of evaluating land use, really come down to the legal findings.
Right. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, would someone like to start off the discussion with the motion? Again, we're considering items eight and nine together. Item eight includes four applications. Item nine includes two.
Staff recommendations of both eight and nine, A, B, C, and D, and A and B, are nine.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland has made a motion to approve the applications in both items eight and nine. So that's eight, A, B, C, and D, and nine, A and B. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
So I wanted to discuss the conditional use permit to allow for a new automobile convenience facility. So this is the Holiday site, not the White Castle site. Well, the Holiday proposal, I should say. You know, I won't be voting for this conditional use permit. And I'll give my reasons in a moment. But I did want to start out by saying I think that the building taken alone has respected a lot of what the city has asked for. Another quality building materials and good street frontage, door at the corner. And there's a willingness to work with the neighborhood association and so forth. So I want to acknowledge that and thank that. I also, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made. This is an underuse of the space. And we've already covered all the ground of, you know, what this neighborhood is and what it could be, and so on and so forth. The transit, the designations. That being said, in all of our testimony today, I, you know, I don't see a way to discuss those issues and give the commission power to act. We just don't have, I don't see us having the authority to deny the application on that basis. But I think this project raises issues beyond those land use and planning features. The applicant has asked us to approve a conditional use permit to allow an automobile convenience facility, which defined in our zoning code as an establishment where the principal use is the sale of gasoline or any other automobile engine fuel. Then I do have the, you know, and it can include the building and whatever, selling other stuff. Hence my question, Shannon, I wasn't sure. So to approve the conditional use permit, the commission must find that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. So this is our general police powers. And the sale of gasoline by its nature is a but-for contributor to greenhouse gas emissions and therefore to climate change. This seems like sort of a lofty motion or rationale, perhaps. But, you know, climate change is projected to be, and in some cases already is, detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. And I'll share a couple citations in support of this idea from the global to the local. So first, from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Impacts of climate-related extremes include alteration of ecosystems, disruption of food production and water supply, damage to infrastructure and settlements, morbidity and mortality and consequences for mental health and well-being. From the Environmental Protection Agency's Endangerment and Cause or Contribute Findings for Greenhouse Gases under Section 202A of the Clean Air Act, Final Rule, and this was compelled by Massachusetts versus EPA Supreme Court case. Quote, "The administrator finds that greenhouse gases endanger both the public health and the public welfare of current and future generations." "The administrator also finds that the combined emissions of these greenhouse gases from motor vehicles contribute to greenhouse gas air pollution that endangers public health and welfare. These findings are based on careful consideration of the full weight of scientific evidence." A little more local, from the Minnesota Department of Health. Quote, "Changes occurring in Minnesota's climate are affecting our health and well-being and will have even greater impacts in the future. Air pollution, extreme heat, flooding, drought, and ecosystem threats were identified as hazards relevant to Minnesotans." From the Minneapolis Climate Action Plan, "A move to cleaner, reliable energy sources for transportation has the potential to improve public health. While climate change is a global challenge, local action can make a difference. If emissions continue to rise, the Twin Cities could see an increase in heat-related deaths and heat-related illnesses." And it also cites lung diseases such as asthma, watering, insect-borne diseases. And I mentioned it's in a sign that our comp plan directs the city to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It says reduce, not encourage reduction. So it's a directive, including from vehicle engines in Policy 6.2. So these authorities and countless others state unequivocally that climate change does and will endanger public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. These authorities are also clear that greenhouse gases explicitly including those produced from burning gasoline and similar products are contributing cause to climate change and thus to the various endangerments previously cited. This then brings us back to our application. The Holiday gas station sits on the clock already. And Holiday is essentially proposing two actions, although they're grouped in the same CUP. Moving and expanding the station store, as I see as one. And two, is moving and expanding the pumps and fueling points. I don't want to address the moving and expanding of the station store because I don't see any problem with that. However, I do not believe that improving on and expanding the mechanisms that inescapably deliver dangerous greenhouse gases meets our charge to protect the health and welfare of our fellow citizens. I know that voting to deny improvement or expansion of a fueling facility will invariably raise this issue again for this commission and others in the future. There are many gas stations in Minneapolis, and they too may wish to expand. And I realize voting in support of this could gradually phase out gas stations in Minneapolis. But if we, as a city, are serious about climate change and serious about our duty to protect the health and welfare of Minneapolis citizens, we need to be comfortable with such ramifications. These same ramifications in other industries are occurring on the federal level. If we find that the sale and promotion of gasoline with its associated greenhouse gases and climate change endangers public health, safety, comfort, and welfare, we're supported by the best science, overwhelming evidence, and the highest and strongest authorities. And I should also note that by denying the CUP, we are not shutting Holiday down in its current right to sell. And I don't have any interest in doing that. But I do believe that expanding on this right is not in line with our required findings for a conditional use permit.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Lukey, here.
Well, I wasn't prepared to discuss that. But I did want to say that I do agree with Commissioner Rockwell that this is a legally difficult situation. I don't think we have the authority or the standing to deny the CUPs for either the fast food or the gas station just based on our authority and what we're allowed to make findings based on. Global warming aside. So I will say I agree with the speakers and the fact that high intensity, more dense use of the site would have been preferred and certainly encouraged. And I think we all would have been enthusiastically supportive of that. And at the same time, I do also want to also acknowledge the applicant's willingness to improve the public realm and work with the city in regard to the application that was submitted. So it's not, it's not ideal, but it also is something that is allowed in a little bit. It leaves our hands a little tied. So I would say maybe that's something to look for in the future when we plan our policy. However, because we can't just deny it because nobody wants to live next to a gas station or deal with the ramifications there, we legally can't do that. So mainly, I think it's a, the conditional use permit in both applications that we're dealing with here that is in question. I don't think the sign, as much as I think eight feet is excessive, and I actually would still encourage them to consider making it smaller because it just seems like it'd be a nightmare. There's nothing we can do about it. It's allowed. And the site plan review actually just seems to be things that would make it better. So I can't vote against it. So I'll be supporting it, although I heartily do agree with the speakers tonight. And I think that this is maybe just something we need to address in the future to make sure that land doesn't go underutilized in the future. As someone who very much tried to hold out to get a median until there's an electric one on the market, and there is not, so I had to get one. Anyway, I completely agree with the assessment of trying to reduce auto emissions and greenhouse gases. Unfortunately, I think that's a little bit out of our purview today. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rockwell.
Let me, let me ask what our, and I'm doing this not to contest, but... So what, so when you think about establishment of maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare issue, what is, what do you see as our authority there? Because I think, and the reason I bring this up is I think the federal government had a similar question. And that's, that's why this was a case that went to the United States Supreme Court.
You know, so here, I will address it. I do agree, we need to consider it. I just question whether the location and addition of gas pumps, whether this, having gas pumps so people can fill up vehicles they have, whether or not that is directly the contributor, whether that's just causal in a way. I'm not sure having the pumps themselves as much as having people who have cars that require the gas. I mean, to be honest, moving the gas station farther away might actually increase the emissions because people would have to drive farther to refuel their gas hogging vehicles. It's almost because we put a noose around our own necks relying on vehicles of this nature. So I'm just, I shouldn't say it doesn't have an impact, but I'm saying it's not necessarily, this isn't the root cause of the problem as much as people's decisions to have vehicles that pollute.
Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to add, and I certainly share some of the concerns of many of the speakers, that it seems like this is a very underwhelming project in an area of the city where we have the policy framework for much more intense development. Certainly, we've seen a lot of development interest in this area and some of the most dense development in the city outside of downtown proper. However, right now, the site is zoned C2, which while that can support more dense development, it also supports lower intensity development, much like this. And while both of these new buildings do require a conditional use permit, we only have a certain amount of latitude in, with respect to making those findings. And, you know, overall, the site is designed in a way that internalizes the vehicle circulation, that minimizes the number of curb cuts. So some pretty significant measures have been taken in order to try to mitigate some of those potential impacts to the surrounding properties. So while it does seem somewhat underwhelming, it is a pretty drastic improvement over the existing condition. And I don't think we just have a lot of latitude when it comes to denying these applications. So if there is no further discussion, please call the roll.
Lukey, here.
Aye.
Rockwell.
No, on the basis of eight A.
Squeezy.
Aye.
Vreeland.
Aye.
It's three to one.
All right. And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on both items eight and nine. Our next item for discussion today is item 11, which is a zoning code text amendment. And Ms. Suther Smith and Mr. Cranville are staff.
Okay. Thank you, President Brown, commissioners. Our next staff would like to discuss the proposed accessory dwelling unit zoning context amendment. This is a small housekeeping text amendment that we anticipate are going to make some positive changes to an existing, very robust ordinance. As you can see on the map, here are the three different types of accessory dwelling units that received permit as of mid-May in the city of Minneapolis. We've had a very good mix of attached, detached, and internal. And as you can see on the map, we have some pretty good distribution citywide. There have been a total of 50 at that time. The three different types, just to refresh your memory, are the internal, so it would be located either, it would be within the principal structure, either on an upper floor or within the basement, one or the other. Attached is an appendage at the rear of the existing principal structure. And then detached is a separate standalone structure that may or may not include off-street parking enclosed within the structure. We have seen some very good examples of accessory dwelling units allowed under the ordinance that was adopted in December 2014. This is an example of an internal accessory dwelling unit at 1918 Cedar Lake Parkway. It provided its own detached accessory structure for parking. The main principal dwelling unit was a single-family, and they have an attached two-car garage. The internal accessory dwelling unit has two bedrooms, and it was very spacious and had a beautiful view of Cedar Lake. 4704 Bryan Avenue North are immediately adjacent to each other. 4700 Bryan Avenue North was a recipient of the Blund Award in 2015. Both of these units are accessible units. They each have their own kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping room. These particular units shared laundry facilities. And there was a door between the two dining rooms that allowed for multi-generational family gatherings and being able to allow meals together within the family in the principal unit and the accessory dwelling unit. Here is an example of a detached accessory dwelling unit, 3210 Zenith Avenue South. This accessory dwelling unit had one enclosed off-street parking space. There was kind of a recreational room immediately adjacent to that. And then the upstairs had a living space, bedroom, kitchen, and bathroom. The city of Minneapolis has reviewed seven variance requests since the adoption of the ordinance at the end of 2014. The first one that we'll take a look at here is 3213 East Lake Calhoun Parkway. This was a variance to increase the maximum gross floor area for an accessory detached structure. Presently, the ordinance authorizes a maximum floor ratio, or actually gross floor area of 1,000 square feet. We're proposing changes to that today. The lot was very unique in that it was a very deep lot, almost 300 feet in one direction. This application was denied by our zoning board of adjustment. However, the city council on appeal granted the request. The next example was at 1407 Emerson Avenue North, was an existing single-family dwelling adding an accessory dwelling unit in the attic. The applicants wanted to access that accessory dwelling unit through a combination of deck and stairs at the rear of the structure. This was also denied at the same meeting by the zoning board of adjustment and then granted by the city council, finding that there was existing nonconformity due to some egress requirements in an internal stair at the rear. Staff has also seen additional requests for that similar request to allow for exterior stairs. In all cases, except for one, they were located at the rear of the structure. I should probably note, all of these variances have been approved. And then the most recent variance that we saw was for an existing detached garage that had applied for an administrative increase. So the area, I believe, and height both exceed that, which you would be able to do with your usual detached garage. And they wanted to convert that. And they wanted to convert that detached garage to an accessory dwelling unit. So it did not comply with our floor area requirements. They need variance to reduce setbacks and then also to reduce the window area. We highlight these three in particular because I think that, we think as a team, that the proposed changes will avoid these types of variances going further and allow for reasonable accessory dwelling units that fit within the character of Minneapolis. And I'd like to turn it over to Mayling Smith. Thank you.
Good evening. So these are just a few examples of some of the minor wordsmithing types of changes that we're proposing as part of the amendment, but a lot of them will have actually a large impact. So the first one that would apply for all accessory dwelling units is that we're proposing to eliminate the stepback requirement of 15 feet for a side entrance on an ADU. So this is something that carries over from our requirement for principal dwellings. So a principal dwelling is required to have at least 15 feet from the side lot line if that's where the principal entrance is located, and actually 22 feet if there's a driveway in between the principal entrance and the side lot line. And so this poses unique constraints to ADUs, which many, many of them, especially if you're doing an internal conversion or something like that, you would automatically need to get a variance if your entrance to the ADU is facing a side lot line. So that's one of the proposals that could eliminate some variances. A few clarifications, this does not change any policy, it's just clarifying that ADUs are not required to provide off-street parking and in the University Overlay District in particular, where otherwise the requirement would be easier, would be half a parking space per dwelling unit. So that's a little bit higher than the rest of the city. It could result in something higher than the rest of the city. And then another cleanup text amendment, neither balconies nor decks on an ADU are allowed to face an interior side yard. So currently, the code says balconies, we're adding decks just to make sure that everything is clear, we're trying to maintain privacy for neighbors. And then one of the original intents of the prohibition on unenclosed exterior stairs was to preserve the low-density character of our neighborhood. So we were, in writing the previous text amendment, we required that all exterior stairways be enclosed. And so this resulted in three variances, as Shanna pointed out. This is a requirement for, especially for duplexes, when you have special egress requirements and with limited ability to add stairways to existing residential structures, this can result in a variance automatically. So what we're proposing is to keep the prohibition on enclosed stairways or allow another outlet by saying it at least has to be located behind the principal structure. So you could do either one in order to still maintain the character but provide applicants with a few more options. And I'll turn it over to Peter Crandall.
I'm going to talk a little bit about our thinking behind the detached changes specifically. A lot of the concern regarding detached accessory dwelling units dealt with the capacity in the existing ordinance to incorporate enclosed parking in addition to adequately sized dwelling space. And so what we did was to do some modeling to try to come up with a reasonable number in terms of maximum gross square footage that would allow someone to incorporate a typical two-car garage on a typically sized Minneapolis lot along with a reasonably sized dwelling unit. And that's without exceeding existing regulations as far as footprint goes for accessory structures on a lot. So the image on the left that you see there is a typical 5,000-square-foot lot, kind of maxed out in terms of the allowable accessory footprint and allowing for a two-car garage, including some vertical circulation space. And that comes to a total of 1,300 square feet with about a 550-square-foot dwelling unit, which we felt was a reasonable size. Then we started thinking about larger lots and how we might be, or how we might be able to provide more flexibility for those and used sort of what would be a reasonably sized three-car garage as kind of the basis for thinking about gross square footage for larger lots. So this is a 10,000-square-foot lot that you see and a, what an 800-square-foot footprint accessory structure with three parking spaces, and that leaves you with about a 700-square-foot dwelling space. Obviously, in both of these scenarios, the parking space could be swapped out for dwelling space. So someone would be making that decision and compromise in either scenario, but this just provides for some more flexibility in, you know, allowing people who are making this investment to have that choice. And this slide just shows that we're not changing the height requirement. We feel like that's working well right now at 20 feet, and so that's 20 feet measured and to the midpoint of any pitched roof and then to the highest point of any flat roof structure. Do you want to go back steps? Okay. So that concludes the presentation. These are just the next steps in terms of how this ordinance will move forward through zoning and planning and city council. So we'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Sweetsie?
Yeah, before you have a seat. Just from my curiosity, in that 10,000-square-foot lot scenario, would that be, does this only apply to lots that have single-family homes on them, or could that be a multi-unit dwelling with an ADU in the back over that garage?
So the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is restricted to single and two-family lots. So that would be a single or duplex.
Okay, no more than two.
Right.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions of staff?
I'd make a motion to approve the zoning code text amendment.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland, excuse me, has made a motion to approve the zoning code text amendment. We also have a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner, Ms. Smith?
Hi. I believe that there is a member of the public who wishes to speak.
Oh, that's true. It is, we do, we do need a public hearing on a text amendment, don't we? I apologize. At this time, I'll, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and please, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Winston Wilde, but I live at 220 Washburn Avenue North. I just want to share my experience with planning one of those, and I do have my schematics if you want to see those. But in my situation, I excitingly bought my home in Bryn Mawr, which, you know, has lots of hills, knowing that I want to build a super garage in the future, as I call it. And in my situation, my alley is 11 and a half feet below street level, so really precludes itself well to, I call it my super garage, with a two-car garage on the lower level and at great access to the upper level in the back. And really going through this and bearing in mind the existing 670-square-foot maximum allowable one-floor area, that obviously got me over the 1,000 previously allowed square footage because counting for the lower level for the garage kind of has livable area. So really, it got into a situation where, working with Mayling, who was fantastic about it, and going into a situation looking at a variance, which in my situation where my garage is built into a hill currently, I would be filling in my basement with dirt rather than making additional area in my lower level, which would be invisible from the outside eye. So really, previous, before these changes, but having, could be going for a variance which would be near impossible to get since I don't have any hardship other than this hill. So really excited about the suggested changes, particularly to the maximum allowable square footage.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and we already have a motion and a second to approve the text amendment. Is there further discussion on that motion?
That hill sounds like a hardship.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this as well. I've been supportive of the addition of accessory dwelling units to the zoning code, and I realize that initially we took a fairly cautious approach since this was something new, and it seems that all of these proposed changes are simply related to addressing some of the variance requests that have come up and making it a little easier for people. So I'm supportive of this change. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Four zero.
All right. And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 11 and concludes our meeting for today. We have committee the whole on Thursday. Our next meeting is August 15th. We are adjourned.